Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, January 28, 2013. First order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
(Music) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? I see nothing here but the twilight's last ring. Woods and skies and bright stars through the perilous night. You're the man I've seen wash first on heavenly streaming. And the Lord is with thee, the Lord is with thee. Give him glory, my God, as I'm bound for sinners. Oh, bring us back to our strength and to the good in prayer. For the land of the trees and the home of the rain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, take the roll, please.
Good evening, Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember Fetter?
Here.
Councilmember Dodge?
Here.
Okay, item four. We have received a Councilmember Cordy's resignation in accordance with Charter Section 2.09A. A vacancy exists. Ms. Bettis, who was the next highest vote getter from the last election?
Michael P. Jones.
And has he agreed to serve?
Yes, sir.
Swear 'em in, please.
Mr. Dodge?
Should there not be a motion? Do we have to accept?
It has to be a motion.
We don't have to accept it. You have to accept the resignation.
I, the undersigned Michael P. Jones.
I, the undersigned Michael P. Jones.
Having been duly appointed to the office of Councilmember.
Having duly appointed to the office of Councilmember.
Of the City of Garden City.
Of the City of Garden City.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Garden City.
And the Charter of the City of Garden City.
That I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
That I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration of the office.
An honest and efficient administration of the office.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And to perform said -- to perform the duties of said office.
And perform the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Let's reset for a couple minutes for pictures. We're gonna go to recess for a couple minutes. Okay. Moving on to item five, approval of the agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Presented by Ms. Lynch.
Support.
Support by Ms. Dodge, in a discussion from the council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Community events, we have one, and Ms. Bettis, that's yours.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm pleased to announce the Key Club's 11th Annual Empty Bowl. It's on February 11 at 1:00. The Key Club is a -- the student offspring of the Kiwanis Club, and every year they hold an empty bowl fundraiser, and that allows them to have enough funds to pack lunches for hungry kids, the kids who fight against hunger. And we package food and provide for those who cannot provide for themselves. The event is going to be at 6:00 on February 13 at the high school cafeteria. It's $10 for adults and $5 for students. Make your reservation. If you can't come, or you have something more romantic in mind for that day, then you can offer a donation, and any Kiwanis member will be happy to accept it. Just make it payable to the Garden City High School. I am a Kiwanis member, and there are several of them here if you'd like to stand. And it's a good event. It feeds the hungry, and please help the children who are trying to do something good for the community. Help them do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bettis. Moving on to item seven, comments from state and county officials. We have County Commissioner Richard LeBlanc. He wants to come up and introduce his staff. He was sworn in as our new commissioner on January 1st.
Thank you, Mayor. So, members of council, mayor, other elected folks, and people in the audience, of course, thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak. You know, many of you may have noticed that I've been in the audience since September of 2011. I haven't said a lot, though, because I try to get to lay the land and get to know people and not interfere, certainly not politic. But I've learned a lot about the town that I grew up on the edge of, having lived in Westland my entire life, except for one year in Garden City. But one of the things that I asked the mayor for permission to do is introduce some folks that are working with me in what is the new 12th District of Wayne County. And so that you know, the 12th District is now comprised of most of the City of Westland, all of Garden City, and all of the City of Inglewood. And your former commissioner, Diane Webb, was redistricted, so to speak, and she serves adjacent to some of our communities. One of the things, though, that does carry over is District 12 staff. I elected to keep some folks on who had been there, who had been working with the former District 12 communities, and that is Mary McLendon and Jay Blankhorn. Jay is the one that will typically answer the phone in the office and do things downtown, and Mary's the one that's pretty much everywhere, including where I can and cannot be. So these are some folks that my hope is that you'll become very familiar with and call upon in the event that, you know, one or the other of us might not be available. So our contact information remains the same as well. If you would wish to contact us, and I'm gonna say this, but it's really kind of a difficult email address, but it's district12@co.wayne.m i.us. And rather than do that, just look me up on the Internet, and you'll find all of our contact info, and the telephone number remains the same, and all of that good stuff as well. So one of the goals representing the three communities and the school districts that are within it is that we should allow ourselves to be available for learning things about the communities, about responding to questions and concerns, and various activities that take place. My hope and my goal is that you'll see one or more of us, at least monthly, within your community. And again, you know that if I can be here, I will. But if for some reason I can't, of course, someone else is gonna be here on my behalf. So I'll talk briefly about some committees that I serve on. I was fortunate to be appointed to Ways and Means, which, for those who don't know, that's the money. That is the appropriation place. The county and its $2.1 billion budget is suffering, quite frankly, right now. There are deficits that must be addressed. The New Ways and Means Committee, I believe, is made up of folks who will continue the effort to address that issue. I've also been appointed to Economic Development, Government Operations, the Committee on Rules, but there's a brand-new committee that I've been asked to chair, and this committee is called Efficiency and Accountability in County Government. And I tell ya, this is gonna be an interesting committee. It is. But having talked to the chair after the election and before actually becoming seated about some things that we would wish to do, I think amongst the things that the chairman considered is that I've been elected eight times, I've served in four different forms of government, state, county, local, and school, and maybe there's a thought that with that amount of experience or tenure, if I can call it that, that there might be a fresh set of eyes to look at some of this stuff. And that's really what it is. I mean, a lot of us probably have suggestions as to what we might wish to do in the county. Some of it's probably illegal, that's why Judge Hammer's here. But anyway, so we really do need to get a handle on, in my opinion, on where the money's going, how it's being spent, the things that are necessary, those that might be really nice but are not as necessary. And with that, I did mention that Judge Hammer's in the audience, so I'm gonna ask, if there's any questions that I can respond to, I'd be glad to, and if they're really hard, I'm gonna call him up to answer for me.
So please bring as much money back to Garden City as you can.
Absolutely. You know, one of the things that Diane Webb ordered me to do, ordered me to do, is to bring home the dough. And I know that working with Councilmember Lynch, that they did a very effective job of that. I'm told that sometimes it's on a cycle, so to speak. One community may receive a different amount this year than they did last year so that it can all be spread effectively. But only half in jest, I did say that when Merriman Road is repaved, when it's reconstructed, and we're gonna cut the ribbon to allow traffic to flow on it, I will be there. I'll take as much credit as I can, so long as she's not hitting me from behind. But it really is her effort, and that of a lot of other people, that will have made that happen. So, you know, there's no promises that can't be kept necessarily, but I think that my record proves that I'll do the very best that I can for this community and the others that I serve. I've gotten to know each of you on the council, as well as our new councilman, over the course of the last year and a half or so, and I stand ready to get to work. So again, any questions you might have?
Can I give you a project?
Listen, did I maybe delegate?
You can delegate it after I give it to you. We have several residents throughout the community, including us, that are constantly, constantly, constantly complaining about the excess sewage on our water bills that comes from the county. That is your project. How do we bring that cost down?
Yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because all of the communities in Wayne County have that as an issue. And having served in local government since the early 1990s, '92 to be exact, I know that this is something that has crept up and up and up and up over the course of time, and in fact has overtaken actual water uses charges.
Yes.
You know, to be fair, some of it has been ordered by the courts. We do have a different judge than Judge Fikens, who initiated a lot of that activity. Judge Cox, though, is, I think, equally as sensitive, if not more so. And the issue itself is not gonna go away, but how we deal with it or how we address it, I think, is what you're asking, Councilwoman. And I believe that members of the county commission are as sensitive to that, to the areas that they represent. There was, last week, a request by another community in Wayne County to allow itself to recapture monies that were -- that are being, I'll say, kept from the community now. You know, it's an LDFAs or a Tifa DDA, that type of thing. The county is not granting any extra breaks to anyone right now in terms of extension of contracts and things of that nature. The water issue is as big as all of those, perhaps even more so. Some folks in one of the other communities I represent, you know, that recently been on the news, many people here have probably seen it, water bills exceeding $1,000. I mean, that is, I guess, if you looked in the dictionary, that'd be insanity to find, but, you know, we do have to address that, and I'm glad that you brought that up.
And it's more like two times the amount. And we've got one of those residents that got an exceedingly large bill sitting right here in the front row. Single person, nobody else. So if you could address it and get back with us, and there's gotta be some relief out there for the communities and the residents, there has to be.
Appreciate that. Anything else? I'll just conclude then by saying that my entire life that I've had a telephone, it's been listed in the book. If you need to reach me, you know, if you can't find an office number, call me at home. If you use my name, richardleblanc.com or .net, those are my websites, so send me an email. I'd be glad to, you know, be as responsive as I can, as quickly as I can. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Item 10, consent agenda. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items A-1 through 5.
Support.
Support from Ms. Squires, in discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Moving on to the study session, item 1, sidewalks, Wayne County, Mayor Monroe Project.
Mayor, my opinion on this is, let's say no to this. Putting a sidewalk in City Park is -- and on federal land, which is the post office. It's a little ridiculous, considering we can't plow our lots. And we can say no to the sidewalk without saying no to Merriman.
I feel that this is the time we need to put sidewalks in, for the residents, for the handicapped, for kids. When you do a major project such as this, when you're changing the water mains and the sewers and the road, redoing the road, that's the time to bring everything up to date, and I believe we should have sidewalks.
They're not doing water mains and roads, and then the city's gonna be responsible for the City Park portion. We said no to doing it along Cherry Hill, what was about three years ago.
Just my opinion, I'm throwing in my opinion, this is the seven of us up here.
It's -- we can't -- we -- our DPS has said they can't plow lots, so how are they gonna shovel snow and maintain more sidewalk at City Park?
Yeah, the thing is, if the DPS can't even plow the lots without a 99% complaint rate, how in the world can we do a sidewalk that I walked on the path when I was a kid, and that's a long time ago? I don't know. Is that wise?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Ms. Squires?
First, I wanna address the trip hazards. I think we positively should be replacing any trip hazards. That should be taken care of, because now's the best time to take care of it, while we're putting in the new road, while we have everything there. The issue about the sidewalk on City Park, that's a tough one, because, as was stated, we need the sidewalks. There's a path there where people walk and ride their bikes, but at the same time, we need to be able to plow it, or have somebody plow it, and we don't have the money for it. So it's kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other situation. My druther is to have it, but again, when it comes to snow and stuff like that, I don't know who's gonna be able to take care of it. But I do know that there is the path there where everybody walks and everybody rides the bike. I was looking at it and questioning, what if we only did the sidewalk up to the driveway at the post office? Because at the post office, there's now cement that people could walk on, but we definitely can't put one across the front of the park. So, I don't know.
Well, my thought, not discussing that, but the trip hazard you mentioned, let the owners get them repaired. If they don't repair them by such a time that the road will be replaced, then they'll have it done for them and build them.
But they have to be done, is my point. We can't let the trip hazards go.
No, those definitely have to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far -- has anyone contacted the post office regarding if they would take care of that walk?
Well, just so you know, Pat, well, you're not gonna tell the post office anything.
No, I'm talking about asking, I know. I'm not talking about telling.
That's the federal government.
I'm talking about asking.
Our ordinance doesn't allow you to have asphalt sidewalk, but the post office does. That's the federal government, they'll do whatever they want. Don't even discuss it with them. Period.
Unfortunately.
Ms. Squires, have you done her?
I -- yes, I've done. And the word was "ask," not "tell" them. Thank you.
Doesn't make a difference, they're gonna do what they wanna do. Period.
Yes, thank you. I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse with sidewalks for City Park. We have miles and miles of sidewalks that we've done nothing to in many years, as well as streets. We started to put together a study for sidewalks, which we have not gone back to nor continued the study on it. We get sued often from people for things in the community, sidewalks, playground equipment, anything that someone can hurt themselves on, they always come back to us, and we do not have a very good record of maintenance, which, and I'm not an attorney, but I don't think plays well for us when we can't show we're maintaining what we have. To consider putting sidewalks in at an area that is a play space is not a good thing at this point. The money that it's gonna take to put sidewalks around the park that has a walking path now, so they won't be using these sidewalk area to walk, I would not think, when they have a circular walking path, is irresponsible, both common sense and financially. We don't have the money. We need to choose our projects wisely. This is not a wise move to keep expanding a product or service we cannot keep up. And three of us, I'm the third one to say, we can't. We know we can't. So it doesn't make sense to put down a sidewalk that we're gonna end up getting sued over. Let's take the money, let's go back to our study that we asked to have, that we've done nothing with, and let's start looking at repairing and replacing sidewalks that we're responsible for. And let's get that done. Let's take care of what we have. Once we're all done, then let's bring this back up and let's look at sidewalks around the park.
Ms. Lynch?
Um, I -- when I was speaking about the sidewalks at the park, I wasn't talking about around the park. The sidewalk I was talking about was only down Merriman, and when I said that there was a path there, people that walk from their houses that are just north of the park, or ride their bikes, or whatever, going down to Taco Bell, for instance, they need someplace to walk. It's not just for walking sake, it's for getting somewhere. There are a lot of people that walk that direction. That's the type of sidewalk I'm talking about, and I'm not talking about it across Cherry Hill. It's only down Merriman, and there is a need for it, as far as there's a large number of people that have to cross over, and they do it in the middle of Merriman Road down by Florence and whatnot, to cross over to take the sidewalk on the other side to walk, then they have to get to Cherry Hill and cross over and cross over again.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
There is a need for that sidewalk.
Well, see, there's a need, but it isn't needed now. My point is this, all these years, people that go to Taco Bell and walk down that way, again, I'm not an attorney, I've not gone to law school. I would assume if you're walking or riding your bike on ground, natural ground, and you slip, our responsibility is a lot less if we're sued than if we put in a sidewalk and they trip on it. Walking through a park area where you trip on a tree root, a hole in the ground, a gopher hole, I don't think we would be held as responsible for as a sidewalk that we argued to have put in. Mentioned at the meeting, we can get sued, and we can't keep it up, but we do it anyway. I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm saying with the condition we're in, and our infrastructure, which the mayor has said many times, is crumbling, why don't we stop the crumbling before we start building new? That's all I'm saying. He said it, he says it all the time. I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. But I was -- what I was thinking was...
But to add new to a community that needs so much help, in a park, it's ridiculous.
Right. Where I was coming from is basically what Ms. Lynch was saying. The asphalt path sits way off Merriman. If you're coming up down the sidewalk from Roseland to Florence going towards Cherry Hill on a bike or in a wheelchair, you're gonna hit grass and a rut from tire ruts from bicycles. And we should have a sidewalk that takes pedestrians all the way down to Cherry Hill where they're gonna cross at the intersection. The asphalt running track in the park sits off of Merriman Ways, and it's not a sidewalk. And the only thing I was saying, the time to update is when you're doing a major project.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying it was time to do it, but I'm only one of seven, that's my two cents.
If I may.
Ms. Dodge?
This is an addition to the project, because normally the county does not do the sidewalks. So they're asking our permission, do you want it done? The cost would be 100% borne by the city. It would come out of our Act 51 monies, which we don't have as much as we used to, and we do have some projects ahead of us that we wanna put that Act 51 money to. To do that small segment, and I don't know if we could charge the federal government for the -- if it goes in front of the post office, but just for the City Park portion is $13,780. Then for the estimated quantity of trip hazards, which I agree, we can flag those, we've gotten ordinance, follow the ordinance, flag them, the homeowners can get them fixed if they wanna get with the contractor, fine. But that's another $5,000. And again, that's 100% borne by the city. You know, if you have a sidewalk that needs repaired, it's the homeowner's responsibility to repair it. We need, if we're aware of it, at that point, we need to step up and tell the homeowner they have to take care of it. Because once the city becomes aware of it, if we get sued, guess what? We knew about it, we did nothing about it. So trip hazards, I'm in agreement, they have to be fixed. I don't know in this if they're -- I think it's all or nothing. I don't think they're giving us a choice that we can do one or the other, or a segment...
I think they are. One or the other. We're both.
But they're not giving us a segment at City Park. They're saying from Florence to Cherry Hill. It's a...
I think that we can say where it ends.
That's not the language I'm reading.
You guys wanna go ahead and trip hazards, but not the new sidewalk?
Definitely the trip hazards.
Not me. I want everybody to pay for their own.
But they have to pay for their own.
If they don't have it done by such and such a date, then we can handle it.
Then it's picked up here. Yes.
Okay. Anything else on this council? We just looking for discussion tonight? Any man?
No, it's gonna be needed to, they need it by...
We were looking for a vote of direction by council, if it means a B, then that's our direction.
Yeah, February 4, I think.
Okay. No action on it?
Do we know, can we just do the trip hazards?
Not as far as this, no. We can handle the trip hazards as we handle other trip hazards routinely, but it would not be a part of this project.
Okay, so if we go take this to C, we just say no, but do the trip hazards on our own?
Correct.
I'm fine with it going to C under those terms.
Anyone go C? Go C?
Go.
Okay. Go C. Item 2, transfer appropriation for ball field maintenance. Mr. Fetter?
Um, where's the money coming from?
It would be coming from the contingency fund. This, this action, and I know Mr. Pulmonden is here, this action arises primarily from meeting council... a meeting council held, uh, with the various athletic groups and the direction that, even though I wasn't city manager at the time, that I took away from that meeting, which was perhaps we had overburdened the athletic organizations in our, our zeal to recover as much money as possible. From that meeting, I developed the philosophy that we will have a park and we will have ball fields regardless of whether or not the GCYAA existed. And we have a certain basic level of safety and condition that we need to maintain, whether it's for four kids in a pickup game after school, or whether it's for an organized GCYAA event. So I had those discussions with Mr. Pulmonden. Uh, I told him what my philosophy was and what I felt, felt council's philosophy was. And that has led us to where we are now, which is we will contract with, uh, a company to provide basic field safety, basic field maintenance. Uh, they will not be out chalking lines or doing anything like that. But they will make sure there are not hot holes, uh, that sort of thing in the fields that would prevent a hazard.
Does that include the torn netting and stuff?
That's correct. Anything that would be there regardless of whether or not they're organized ball. We would certainly put up netting and things to protect neighborhoods and passing motorists, uh, even from a pickup game after school. And I thought what I took away from the meeting was we want to provide those basics and relieve the athletic organizations from a portion of that burden.
But this is just the ball field maintenance, uh, at Muller and City Park, Field Number One and Two. This is just the ball field maintenance. This doesn't include fencing or netting or anything else. This is just a portion of what we discussed in the direction.
Mr. Pulmonden, Mr. Pulmonden?
It's actually one, three, one, two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good deal. Two's already coming in.
What does this encompass?
Uh, what it encompasses is, as, uh, city manager said, is basic field safety of Muller Fields, one through seven, City Park Fields, one and three, which are non-adult softball fields. It includes a general safety and upkeep of those fields, in addition to any safety features related to those fields, such as netting and fencing. As everyone knows, last year we had an issue on Muller Seven where the netting came loose. The city purchased the netting. We paid the contractor to go out there and put up new netting. So if another net goes down, we would pay the contractor to go up with this money that's being transferred over.
Dan Orville, your other bid?
Well, this is a current contract. So this is a bid that was approved last July and approved by council. So our current contractor for ball field maintenance for the adult softball program is with Lockwood Landscapes. So...
Any other questions?
See?
See? Are you okay going to see?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move to see. Thank you, Mr. Pulmonden. Item three, additional zoning mapping amendment. Community business to C3, from C2 to C3. This is the Knights of Columbus Building on Ford Road. It's currently zoned C2, and they wanna go to C3.
See?
Um, I have a question on this.
It's not at C2, it's jewelry.
I should have highlighted it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. ...
No, the plan commission had a public hearing.
I'm well aware. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's okay. I don't, I don't see it.
And this is to call for a public hearing, so if you think of your question.
I understand.
At time.
Move to see?
Yes.
And just so people know that there, it's for Ziedman's Jewelry.
Yeah, it's for Ziedman's Jewelry, uh, going in where the Knights of Columbus Building is at. And we'll call for a public hearing for February 11th at 6:58 PM. We'll move this to C. Okay. Item four, selecting the city manager. Uh, before we get started, I was misquoted in The Observer on January 13th, but said, Mayor Randy Walker said the public is not invited. I did not say that. What I said was that the interviews will not be televised. And they did do a small correction on the Janu- January 17th Observer on page two. But I wanted to tell the residents, I, the, the public's always, our, our meetings are always open. And that was a misquote that I was not happy with. And I did not say that. When we do city manager, uh, interviews, the public is welcome to come, but they will not be televised. So I want everybody to know I did not say the public is not invited. Um, we need to...
We need to add another confidential, A.
Do we?
In their, in their resume, it's confidential, and it's not on our list, so...
Do you wanna move this to close session?
Sure. Why?
Why?
Okay, we can, you know, I'm just offering, because we, we can take it to close session for confidential attorney opinion. Client privilege communication to discuss.
Well, if, if, Mayor, if I could ask the attorney, is, is this necessary? Fire two?
That's, that's a council decision. The attorney's opinion is what was rendered previously on that.
Yeah, you've given it to us already several times.
I don't know what several, but I have given it to you.
Yeah.
Written confidentially.
Yeah.
It was specifically regarding the process.
I wonder why that wasn't marked.
And...
Okay.
The meeting's had question.
Council members, uh, prepared to give me four or five names. Um, and we can have Ms. Fetter set up the interviews.
Mr. Walker, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to do this, uh, a different way as not harm or offend anyone. Uh, I'm looking through the, uh, here it is. Of the, what is it, twenty-five, I guess we have now? If you don't wanna use the letters that we have, uh, we can use numbers or whatever, but I don't think, uh, it's in our best interest or all these different people. If something wrong happens to be said, uh, I think we should go with a letter or a number or whatever.
Yes, we'll go with the letter since it's...
Yeah.
Very easy, accessible.
So you guys wanna go through all these?
Yeah, just very quickly and say, yes, we want them to continue on. No, we don't. Or there's a possibility.
We wanna do a yes or no, and if you want to start?
Just to start, get the ball rolling, and toss out the ones we absolutely don't want.
No.
Okay. Yes, yes, yes. All right. We got the majority that wanna do it that way. So we'll go down, and if the majority say yes, then that person will get interviewed?
Yeah. The, or, I mean, depending on, if we have, let's say, sixteen, we might not wanna interview sixteen. We might wanna narrow it down more.
Okay.
Um, let's stake, take it one, seven, nine.
So we're not gonna say no names. We're gonna go with the letters.
A, B, C, D, E, F. Yep.
With A, yes or no?
No.
I have that as, uh, he's on the fence on me. It's possible.
How many, how many no's would we have for A?
And I'm not gonna say so.
I'm gonna say, uh, no.
Okay. B?
No. Another one I could go either way on.
Yeah, I could too.
I'm not gonna say. I'm not gonna say. I'll let you know the ones I want. I'm not gonna say any of the other ones.
Okay. Hey, I don't have a majority on B either.
Yeah, I could go either way on this one, either in the pool or out of the pool. It's...
If we don't have, then we'll just call them in for an interview.
What's that?
I says if we don't, if we don't have it one way or the other, we, I would prefer we'd call them in for an interview.
How many yeses on B?
I can go either way.
It's not a yes. So, so no.
No. Okay. Okay. C, how many yeses? C and no hands?
Okay, now, I'm a yes.
Okay, it's a no.
I'm a very strong yes.
On C?
On C.
Hang on a second, please. This, this gentleman enables everything we're looking for. I mean, this is impressive.
Keep it, keep it to the letter, Mr. Fetter, please.
I didn't say either. I said it's impressive. The letter's impressive. C is impressive.
You said, you said no.
You gave away gender.
You gave away gender.
Oh, God forgive me.
That's why I don't wanna do this.
That's why we gotta be careful on this.
I don't think people can get sued for gender, as long as I'm right.
That's true.
I'm a very strong yes on this person.
Who else we got on C? Any more yeses on C? Okay, it's a no. D? Any yeses?
I'm a, I'm on the fence on him too.
Okay, it's a no. E?
I'm a yes on E.
Any other yeses on E?
Yes. Me as well.
On what, D or E?
E, E is an Edward.
I'm an O on E.
No, an O. So it's a no. F?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to take a look at, uh, F.
Before I get to yes. I have yeses. We just haven't got to yet.
How many, how many yeses do I got?
It's a yes for me.
I'd like to see it as well.
Okay, we got a yes on F. G?
Uh, no, no.
No. Okay. H?
Yes for me. Yes.
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 No.
We got yes on H?
Uh, on H, I'd like to go with a yes.
Okay, it's a yes. I?
No.
No.
Okay, no on I. J?
Yes.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes on J?
No.
No.
Nope. L?
No.
Any yeses on, on L? No. M?
No.
No.
No. No on M? N?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes on N?
Yes. Yes.
No.
I sit on the fence on that one. Could go either way. If we interview him, we'll be fine. If not, fine.
Okay, it's a no. P?
No.
Yes hands for P?
Either way on that one. Whatever you decide.
Okay, it's a no. Q?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it's a yes. R?
Yes.
Yes.
How many yeses on R? Yeah, four. Okay, yes. S?
No.
Could go either way.
Yes, yes hands for S? Okay, it's a no. T?
No.
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 Okay, it's a no. U?
No.
No.
No. V?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. X?
Yes.
No.
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 No. It's a no. And R?
No.
No.
Okay, that's all of them. So we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven interviews. Am I counting correctly?
Is there going to be, um, just a nation on, background check on any of these before we interview them?
Yes. Yeah, just the general background, not the D.
General background, I believe.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to go over this again real quick. Uh, tell us the, the yeses and the numbers.
All right. Let me give you the yeses. F was a yes. H was a yes. J was a yes. N was a yes. Q and R were both yeses. And W was a yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, uh, when do we wanna start interviewing?
Well, let's get the background done.
Get the background done.
And then, uh, come back to us with some dates, because he's gonna have to coordinate, gonna have to coordinate with the...
If it's possible.
With the applicants to see what the best date is.
Okay.
Some of them may no longer be interested, too.
Yeah.
So, let me just make sure my instruction is clear. I'm to facilitate a background, a basic background check on the seven candidates that you've selected. Um, are we to notify the other candidates that we are no longer interested?
We should with the letter.
Yes, that would be courteous.
No? Okay.
No.
No, if I could defer to Mr. Cronin?
Well, no, it's an administrative decision. But you want my recommendation. I've seen this process occur on a number of occasions. Just because you picked some for interview doesn't mean the council's gonna agree upon those. It's not unusual to go back and interview others.
Good point.
And so my recommendation is contact the ones who are gonna be interviewed for sure.
Okay.
But I don't know that I would send a rejection to anybody.
Good point. I'm looking for instructions, so that's fine.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Fetter, I have one other suggestion.
Yes.
My recommendation would be to call off all the references.
Yes.
For the interview. I, I strongly recommend that, but that's another administrative decision.
Do you wish me to do that?
Counsel, if you wish, I'll do it.
Yes. Sure. Or do you want, or do you want it to be something that we do, to take it off of Allison?
What, what are you guys wanna do? I'm okay with either.
I don't know. Would your workload, um...
That ship sailed a long time ago.
I would prefer to see Allison do it.
It's fine.
I'd like to see Allison do it also.
Okay, Allison, go ahead.
Same person. Sorry, Allison.
Okay.
Okay, that's where we're at on that. Uh, let's move on to C. C1? Ms. Dodge?
I move not to accept the Wayne County Merriman Road Project sidewalks.
Support.
Support from councilmen. Jones, um, any discussion from council?
The new guy.
That's a long name. I had to figure it out. Any discussion from, uh, the public? This is on the sidewalk on Merriman.
I guess my question would be, are you gonna make the people that's got broken sidewalks fix them?
Yes.
And give them the option of doing it? And I'm not talking about, like you did when you come around and inspected over by me. You sent one inspector over. He rolled up too many sidewalks, and a lot of you wasn't here. But the council, they had a bleeding heart and said, oh, let's send the other guy over there and unmark them and not fix half of them like you did. I'm talking about fixing the sidewalks, not playing little political games, 'cause my sidewalk might be bad, and I come up here and holler at you, and you take it off like you did when you over on Elmwood and next to it. And I don't know, I don't know if any of you was here or not.
Now, I wish I was in your project, because they made me put a new one in.
Well, they sent a different inspector over, because they didn't like the fact that people come up here and complain, 'cause he marked too many sidewalks. And, uh, so they, they sent another inspector over. That's when we had two, and he was probably a little more lenient, so they got out of it. And you were right about one thing. I had to pay for mine when they did the real project. I even, even tried to bill me for the one that was in the guy during alley. So I don't know where you're getting off. bill is free. So, I don't know where you're getting off. bill is free.
Right.
And somebody said, no, they're, they're assessed for it extra. No, they're not. They're assessed for the same, probably the same price on the road footage as I was, and I still had to do my driveway and my sidewalk. I didn't get no, uh, discount, and, and I didn't get nothing. And neither did you, and neither did anybody else that was in the past project. That started on Maplewood, I think. The city spent eighty thousand dollars of my money putting sidewalks in for other people. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Fetter?
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C2?
Mayor.
Ms. Dodd?
I move to approve a transfer appropriation to the fiscal year 2012-13 Parks and Rec budget in the amount of $5,320 for ballfield maintenance services to Mueller Fields and City Park Fields Number One and Three, and to allow La Clemode Landscaping to perform said services and to authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from council. From the general public. Mr. Buckner?
I just want to get a clear understanding. Is this for all ballfields and all teams, or just for baseball and softball? Is it for soccer clubs?
Not yet. That hasn't come before us yet.
That one hasn't come before us.
Then why are you voting on this if it doesn't include all?
Because they're different fields.
Because we know how I feel about the soccer clubs have to pay for toilet paper.
It's different fields. That agreement's being worked on.
Mr. Wall?
It's not very clear to me what you're talking about. Is this $5,000?
Yes.
Does that include all the maintenance of materials and everything, or is it, what if?
Not the lining.
Pardon?
It includes the general maintenance of the ballfields.
Screens or...
And then if, if the safety netting is needed, then it includes the netting.
And it's, it's locked in at $5,000?
Yes, that's what we've been doing.
I don't think it includes the safety netting. It includes the manpower to put up the safety netting. What this says in here is, um, performing the tasks, weekly nail dragging of the infield, weekly grooming, home plate and mound work, installing, removing plates and mound, uh, replace safety netting as needed, and other duties. So, it's all the safety manpower issues.
Just manpower. Okay, years ago, things have changed, but years ago, I remember Kurt Blankenship and I would go over to Mr. Kerwin's place and borrow his equipment, go over there and do the parts ourselves. I guess that don't happen anymore. Don't have any volunteers to do that? Okay, thanks.
Council, Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C3, zoning request for a public hearing for February 11th.
Mayor.
Ms. Lee?
I move to introduce an ordinance to conditionally amend the official zoning map of the city of Garden City. The ordinance involves a conditional rezoning classification from C2, community business, to C3, general business, for property identified as parcel 35-017-01-0379-00, more commonly known as 30759 Ford Road, and call for a public hearing on February 11th, 2013, at 6:58 AM.
Welcome, Mr. Kerwin. Discussion from council. And the general public.
Uh, C3 is the least prohibitive designation for property. And once it's designated C3...
This one's a conditional.
Yeah.
Which means if the property closed, if they changed hands, it would automatically revert back. That's what this one means, the conditional.
I, I'm under consideration, but, uh, I have a belt tire placed at the other end of my block. And that was owned, C3, back in the day. And I could still hear the tires being removed by the impact wrenches. And, uh, we're a block away from the website.
Ms. Fetter?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodge?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Okay, we will move on to item 11, public comments. You wish to speak? There's a five-minute time limit. Come up and state your name, please. Mr. Wall?
Betty Walts. Uh, got a problem with the water meters or the water. Mr. Goins got a call from someone from City Hall and said that our, uh, water mains have been inbreached or, uh, and exposed to some other else's, and we're getting free water from somebody else? I don't understand. First, I, I called, uh, the Department of Homeland Security. Anytime your water line gets inbreached, or it gets encroached, or infiltrated with something else, the number one thing that the city's supposed to do is call Department of Homeland Security. If you don't have the numbers, 400-346-2300, I made the call. Okay? Because somebody says water coming in, I don't want no, any tourists to come in and put in, stuff in my water. That's dangerous. The second call they gotta make is to EPA, 202-564-5700. When Gomer had problems with his water meter, we specifically asked for a receipt for when it was sent off and when it got back. To date, we haven't received that. Can city manager please make sure we get that receipt? Because if it just isn't sitting around, we don't know if the meter was repaired or what. We're, he's at the mercy. You know, that's just not right. Anytime anybody infiltrates your water system, it's a terrorist act that you got to call Department of Homeland Security. So, don't give us that old bucket waters coming in for free. It's like me saying, I seen a UFO come down Hoover over a water meter and put water, free water into our system. Come on. That's not true. You guys know that. If you'd... Why didn't someone call the Department of Homeland Security about our water line being breached? Why? They said there was no call put in. That's the first thing. Somebody should be responsible of calling. There's terrorists out there, and they're gonna infiltrate your water or your food system the next thing, probably. All right, come on, let's get on the ball. And I want to go back. I've been looking at some things in the past. There's $3 million missing in this city. $3 million. We took an amortization schedule. We got it. For the, uh, $15 million lawsuit, there should have been $1 million designated for the, uh, that from the loggers, $1 million, $70,000 from DDA, okay? Never shows up anywhere on our books. Then we had a lawsuit with, I think it's Tow, Tow Bar, or it's a rubbish company. We received, they went bankrupt, we received a million dollars of that. It's supposed to went into the rubbish fund. There's no, no, I go back. You go back and to, look at the state, you can go all through the audits from 2003 to 2011 on the state thing. They're not there. Where did the money go? There's $3 million. That's a lot of money. A lot of money. Come on, residents, you're gonna have to be more aware of what's happening in this community. You're getting rode over. In the paper writes out how good financially the Garden City is. How good they are, how well they are off. Come on. Either the paper's wrong, or, or somebody's telling me something wrong. It's, it's, it's not right. Things are not happening right. The citizen's gonna have to get more involved in this community. You're gonna have to take this community back for people that don't want to, to, uh, crowd you out and everything else. There's also something else, too, that when we have a clerk treasury, you don't have that in business. Why? Because there's, there's no...
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Wall.
How can you, how can you say that a treasurer can't write a check, do a ledger adjustment, and it'll show zero balance? November, there are things will change here, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anybody else? This public auditor? Yes. State your name, please.
My name is Isaac Robinson. I'm a legal counsel to Congressman John Conyers. And I just wanted to introduce myself to the community. Um, hello, mayor, hello, council. I probably emailed you a few times. I'm sorry, I won't blast too many, uh, more at you. Um, but Congressman Conyers is your new congressman for Garden City. He's the second most senior member of Congress after John Dingell, and we hope that, um, this community utilizes his seniority. Um, and we look forward to working with you. Um, I have three cities that I'm assigned to: Garden City, Redford Township, and Dearborn Heights. So, I'm gonna give everybody my personal cell phone, or it's actually my work phone, but it's a 313-550-9460. Congressman Conyers of this new district has nine new cities, and so we have an office out in Western Wayne County. It's gonna be open on February 4th. It's gonna be on Westland on Warren. And so at a future meeting, I'll bring all that information to you with the address and the phone info. And I look forward to working with you, and I hope I kept this under 47 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Okay. City manager report?
Your honor, just a few things this evening. Uh, I have had a, uh, a follow-up meeting with Edison, I'm sorry, DTE, regarding the streetlights. We continue to move forward with that, with a relamping vision for the city. Of course, it will come back before council, before any action's taken. During the course of this, uh, we managed to identify a few lamps that actually didn't exist in the city, and we ended up, uh, getting a credit, earning a credit on our bill. Uh, we've run into a few bumps in the road. However, we also have now increased the rebate that Edison will offer to us. We've also negotiated, uh, about 200 lamps that would be relamped at no labor expense to us. And if you remember, we're talking about, about 500 new lamps. So, when I spoke about this beforehand, uh, we were looking at about a $200,000 project with a payback of $50,000 a year, or about four years recovery. It's considerably less than that now, and we're still not at the final numbers. This is going well, and I'm, I'm very excited about it. I also had a congress, a meeting today with Dearborn Heights regarding the fire department consolidation in that direction. So, those meetings continue to be ongoing. We did manage in this meeting to come up with some structure on the first steps we will take. Anything occurring right now is, uh, under the grant that we're a part of. Uh, we brought Mr. Cronin in. His time will be paid for by the grant. And we did come away with, uh, some good direction out of that meeting. I also have a meeting scheduled for Thursday with the city of Westland, considering fire consolidation, to look in that direction, and I will report back to council on the outcome of that. And as we saw tonight, the sound system here is, uh, a little ragged. We are working with Mr. York and with Judge Hammer on getting this replaced. We had, had discussions going on in 2012. We couldn't work out a lot of things between the various schedules of the court, and Mr. York, and myself. And so, we didn't move as quickly, but the judge and I have already had one meeting. We anticipate another meeting on being able to facilitate this, to improve the sound system here in the courtroom and council chambers. Uh, personal note, I'd like to thank all the members of council, uh, for their condolences, Reverend Passon and my father. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Kerwin, you have anything for us?
No, but thanks for asking.
Councilmember Dodge?
A couple items. First, um, this past weekend, our Palm squads, both at the middle school and the high school, they competed in the regional competition. Uh, they are both proceeding on to the state competition, which will be held in February at Eastern Michigan University. So, congratulations to our Palm squads. Now, this has been brought up a couple times regarding, uh, regarding Mr. Goins', uh, water meter. Can we please make sure if we sent that out, or if we were doing studies on it to find out if it was reading properly, can we make sure that we get that information back, either to us, and we can share it with him, or to Mr. Goins?
Yes, may I respond?
Yeah, Chief, go ahead.
Uh, I have seen the test results from the company that tested it. We sent it out for a subsequent testing last Friday through the city of Westland and their testing equipment. And both times, the tests have come back indicating the meter is functioning properly. We tried to invite Mr. Goins out to attend this test in Westland with us. Uh, my understanding is he opted not to go. But it has been tested, and we do have the documentation, and I will certainly see that council gets that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Goins.
Okay, then this, uh, it's been, it's been a rough week and a half here, uh, for, well, really, two weeks for people losing loved ones. And, uh, to you, Bob, um, I didn't know your dad, but I'll tell you what, he must have been quite a man, because he raised a great son. So, my condolences to you. And then, uh, to the Bajaya family, um, Bob was a very young man, man of 58, just passed. Thanks to our police department for taking very good care of the family. He, he's, was very well-known for his humor, and he was the type of person, when you met him, you automatically became his family. Uh, he was a former neighbor of mine, and he was a deer processor, so those that are deer hunters probably have known him. But this community is gonna miss him greatly. There are some others that I think the mayor wants to mention, and I'll let the mayor mention, but condolences to, um, all the families that have lost loved ones in this past week and a half, two weeks. And that's all I have.
Mr. Jones, and before you start, it's customary that you give a speech on the night you get sworn in, so...
I'm ready. I want to thank the citizens of Garden City and my colleagues on the council for their support and trust in me. I will try to do my homework on all issues, seek the advice and opinions of those more knowledgeable than I am, and always vote in favor of what I believe is in the best interest of Garden City that will help move it forward and keep it as a good place to live, work, and raise a family. My two highest immediate priorities are selection of a city manager and preparation of a budget. I think it is also time to review and update our city charter. Certainly, the whole issue of how vacancies are filled, uh, needs to be addressed, and, uh, hopefully, we'll, we'll do that, as well as other items in the charter in the future, near future. In conclusion, I'd like to have an opportunity to meet individually with my fellow councilpersons, department heads, and other concerned citizens. These meetings could be for breakfast, lunch, or coffee. At these meetings, I would like to hear what you think are Garden City's greatest strengths, biggest needs, and most important challenges. At these meetings, I don't expect to say a lot. I am more interested in listening to your opinions and taking some notes. And on separate issues, I'm glad to see Allison mention the, uh, empty bowl dinner. And on separate issues, I'm glad to see Allison mentioned the Empty Bowl Dinner coming up on February 13th with Garden City Key Club. I'd also like to point out that on February 10th, it's a Sunday, there's gonna be a comedy night at Albertson's on the Alley, sponsored by the Lyman Foundation, at 6:00 PM. And as many of you know, the Lyman Foundation is very active in supporting Burge School and the autistic program. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynch?
Yes, first, I'd like to start off with sympathy and condolences on the passing chief of your father. Also, on Mr. Bujaya, I had taught his son way back when in middle school. And one more is to the family of Muriel Grimma, who lived in Garden City for over fifty years and was on the library board and the Friends of the Historical Museum, and was very instrumental in the purchase of the Straight Farmhouse and the founding of the museum. And I happen to know there was not a funeral for Muriel, but they're probably having a memorial at a later date. But anybody that would like to donate in her honor and memory could donate to the library or to the museum. Also, Henry Ford Wyandotte Hospital announces the opening of a free clinic for working people without health insurance. It's located on Telegraph Road in the same suite as the MAPI clinic. It's only open on Wednesdays from 4 until 7. Patients are seen by appointment. It's staffed by family practice and internal medicine doctors. And that telephone number is 734-365-3560. So if you don't have insurance, that's a good opportunity for you. I want to congratulate Staff Sergeant Casey Ferris. He was a Garden City resident who was named the 2012 NCO of the Year at the U.S. Army Doug Way Proving Grounds in Utah. He joined the Army about six years ago, and he's the son of Linda Ann Ferris and the late John Lee Ferris of Garden City. And finally, one more item. I found out about this through Conyers' office. There is money given to the county from the state of Michigan and the federal government to the tune of about $170 million, used to assist in the paying of delinquent house taxes, property taxes. Not commercial, it's gotta be residential. The program is called Step Forward Michigan. The taxpayer must own the house, their name must be on the deed, and must live in the house. It's being offered to taxpayers who have suffered a qualifying involuntary hardship, such as the loss of employment, reduction of income, serious medical conditions, a one-time situation. That's a critical situation. The taxpayer must be able to make payments on the taxes going forward and have income to support such payments. However, even though this is a loan against the property, this loan is interest-free and forgiven at the rate of twenty percent each year. Therefore, if the taxpayer stays in the home for five years, the loan ends up being forgiven. So if you're interested in finding out more information, you could go online, all one word, stepforwardmichigan.org, or you could call 866-946-7432. Lot of good information, a lot of people out there trying to help others in need. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Battis?
Your Honor, I have a couple of things I just would like to add to the condolences to the Grimma family. Mrs. Muriel was an election worker as well, and helped us keep the integrity of the elections for many years. And she was a sweet person, and I enjoyed working with her. So God bless her family and her and her new endeavor. I did get our former city clerk, Mr. Gora, who was here, gave me some information, and he'd like me to pass it on. A lot of people are getting solicitations for insurance for your sewer lines. And it doesn't say it outright, but sometimes people get the impression that it's something that comes from the city. And it does not come from the city at all. It's not related to any government. It is simply a commercial enterprise soliciting you to buy insurance to protect your sewer lines. And it's completely at your discretion whether you feel that you need that insurance or not. So I just wanted to make sure there's more than one organization that is making these solicitations. So I just want to make sure that you understood that that is not something that the government is proposing, or soliciting, or insisting on. And thank you, Mr. Gora, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, I think that's everything.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to offer my condolences to city manager Murray and his family on the death of his father, and also the family of Muriel Grimma on her death, and also the family of Bob Bujaya. And I understand Bob Bujaya might have been a really good guy. Other than that, I think Mr. Jones is right. I've asked several times about updating the city charter. It's something, it's, I think, forty, or forty-some years old now, and a lot of the stuff I don't think is right, so I think we ought to get into that. Another thing to go into, probably pretty full steam, so that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Fetter?
Yes. I hope the lady or gentleman's here with the information regarding the girls' high school softball benefit that's coming up in the next couple of days. Huh? Is that you guys? I forgot my sheet. If anybody knows, I'm sorry, I told them I'd bring it up, but they emailed me the form. Our girls' high school softball team, that, as you know, has done very, very well, is trying to raise money, and there's only seven of them. They have a benefit coming up. And please, if you know somebody, or know of somebody that knows somebody who's on the team, contact them. If you cannot participate in the dinner dance, I believe they're having, they're looking for donations, whatever they can get. They're trying to redo that baseball field on Maplewood, right there behind the school. They have to move the gate, the fence in, because it was made for men. It has to meet their qualifications for the league they play in. And again, they're one of the smallest groups we have, plus their heart. There's only seven of them. So if you're looking to give something to somebody that you can write off or do something with the extra money in the cookie jar, please contact our girls, okay, and help them. I am on the board of the Naked Transit System, which is a bus system in Wayne County. It's, I want to say the smaller buses, but everybody always laughs. They are smaller buses. They say Subcon, Naked Transit. They're available to us, and not many people know about it. It's a dollar for them to pick you up and bring you home to doctor's visits or whatever you might have going, as long as you're 55 or older. And this is a service that our citizens, although it's in our community a lot, I think can utilize more. So if you know anybody out there who has issues getting to doctors, other appointments, they will come pick you up. They're beautiful buses. They're heated. They're air-conditioned. They have an attendant. They'll pick you up and drop you off. Just give them your schedule. And I don't know if it's a, I think it's a dollar each way. Okay, so it'll cost you $2.00. I mean, these buses, when you start them, the puff of smoke in the morning costs 10. So you're not gonna take a taxi. Your neighbor's not gonna save money. And they're very, very courteous people on this service. So if this can help you, please look up, I should have their number too. It's been a rough day. And utilize this service. We're part of an area that services Inkster, Garden City, Westland, Wayne. I think that's it. And we pay, the city pays, we give, I believe, $35,000 a year for this service. So it's something that we want here. So I want to make you aware of it. Dan York is gonna be putting an ad together on our local cable channel, City, to advertise the service. And let's see if we can utilize it with our people. Oh, the number, 729-2710. Is that 734? Yes, sir. 734. 729-2710. One last thing. We do get a, I've been, I've gotten a lot of comments, a lot over water. I mean, a lot. More than anything I've experienced thus far. And it never hit me until I came to City Hall this past week during the employee's lunch hour. There were substitute people at the water department. I needed some personal information. And there was a young girl there with a baby and her mother, and they were questioning the water bill. They said they couldn't afford, because we billed them for three bill periods together. Evidently, we did not bill them for the first two. The girl at our counter told it was her fault. Said, "It's your fault. You're responsible. You should have called us." The girl got tears in her eyes. I was dumbfounded. I couldn't say a word. I know this gentleman here, where was he? I just saw him. He's been asking for information on a double meter now. I think we might be going up to three months. I haven't heard a word. No. That being said, we've been going through some issues here in the city. That's not much of an excuse. I just ask for patience, because I haven't forgotten about it. And all you really need to know is, as long as I don't forget about it, you're okay. Okay? I will, though, when we get a new city manager, I think there's answers that the public needs. We need to hire an outside agency to come in here and look at how we run our water department, what our rates are, how we bill it. I think we need a cost analysis on our water department, a breakdown. There's an issue with extra money in the account, which is a good problem to have. My only question is, at the time, would be, how do we find out three years later? So I will be calling for that. It's, I don't want to do it now. We're in the middle of, as you know, getting a new city manager, and there's other issues that have to be addressed, but I will be doing that. As well as, I want this $15 million payment thing looked into. I want an outside accounting firm to do it. We need to put it to bed, one way or the other. Let's see the payments. Let's look at when they went in. Let's lay everything out, the bonds, what are we paying? A complete accounting from the day we started till today that should be made available to anybody that asks to see. And let's see if the money's missing. Let's see if it was misapplied. And let's either put it to bed, or look at what is opening up with that. Okay? I will be calling for that. With the water issue as well, I believe we need to take it another step. There's companies out there that can test your meters. And I know there's people out there that have had huge spikes. It bothers me how we can't bill this young girl. If our meters are new and our system's right, how do you go two billing cycles without getting a bill? Anyway, I want to hire a company, ask for people to call in. What if this company can test 1,000 meters for $10,000? I'm just using that as an example. Let's see if we can get 1,000 volunteers to go to their house and use them as an example. Or if we don't get that many, go through and contact some of the people in the city and say, "Can we come out and test your meter?" Let's get a cross-section of the city. And let's either prove there's an issue, or say there is not an issue, and be done with it. Financially, procedure-wise, whatever it may be. But again, I am going to wait until we get a new city manager, and that will be, I'm sure we'll all be meeting with them to introduce ourselves. That will be on my lips when I meet with that city manager. So just so you know, the second meter has not died in my mind. I understand you haven't gotten an answer, and it's going on three months. People before you haven't gotten answers. When I first got on council, it was brought up. I don't know why. But we will find out. I just can't say it's gonna be now, because of what's going on here now. It's just like the perfect storm. Although I would hope we're still looking into that second meter issue. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Squire?
Okay, first of all, congratulations and welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Nice to have a full council again. My condolences, chief, to you and your family. On another note, the corner of Ford and Merriman looks fantastic. Fantastic. They just about got all this stuff cleared away, all the rubble cleared away. The progress, gas station looks like it's progressing, so job's well done. Also, I had the opportunity last Thursday night to go to the high school to watch a talent show that consisted of students. Basically, I guess from the music department, or I don't know if anyone was able to go, or to be in it. But I would urge anybody who gets a chance, whenever they have something like that at the high school, to go. It costs $3 to get in, which helps them. It helps the school. And it's enjoyable to see what some of the teachers are doing, keeping the kids off the street. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch?
I had one other thing, and because Mr. Fetter brought it up as well. I had stated this a year ago. Somebody had asked the question about the $1 million from the DDA. It was in the audit, year ending June 30th, 2006. That was the beginning of payments from outside sources. So the DDA was the first to give the million dollars, and it is on the audit statement. So, Mr. Wallace, I'd be happy to make a copy of this after the meeting for you, if you'd like. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Jones. Glad to have a full council again.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Dodge. I never met your father. But you're a class act, and your father must have been a great, great guy. And prayers go to you and your family. As well as Muriel Grimma, who I talk to all the time up at the Historical Museum. That's where she volunteered. Talked to her several times, and she will be missed by Garden City. And also Barbara Jones, longtime Garden City resident. She raised six kids in this city. She worked with kids at, I know she worked at Lathers Elementary. Great lady. She passed away last, and our prayers out to the Jones family. And we've had our distractions. We've used a lot of our energies lately with this council member vacancy and the city manager search, and we're still not there. And I hope to get this behind us quick and get a city manager on board. But I, too, want to move forward on the budget, capital improvement projects, relooking at the charter, and making some changes, updating it. And also, I'm very concerned about the water, too. We've gotta get into that water. And I will be working and talking to Richard LeBlanc, our new county commissioner. We gotta come up with a better way. It's, the way we get our water from Detroit, in my mind, is criminal. And they pass it on to all the suburbs, but somebody at a higher level needs to look into that, into our water rates. On a good note, good things are happening in Garden City. Businesses are moving into our town. Ford and Millavale, McDonald's is looking at that. Yaldo's is opening up Kroger's. Dario's Restaurant is switching over to a Chinese restaurant. Ford and Millavale's Bulldozer. So there's a new gem coming in next to the Garden City Moose. So on a positive note, businesses are coming to Garden City. That's a good note. We have less vacant buildings. Businesses get filled. People move into our town. So they can say what they want, but things are happening in Garden City, and it's good for our city. With that, no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.